All right, I have 6:30. It's time to call the May meeting for the Board of Selectmen to order. I'd ask that you all join me, rise and join me in a pleasurable allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. First item on the agenda as always is approval of the agenda. I have a couple of items to amend to it. The CRAD update, item number eight, CRAD will not be here tonight, so we can delete that from the agenda. Under appointments, we have a third appointment to make. That's the Conservation Committee. And then under new business, the Realtor contract, listing for HES, even though the listing proposed agreement is in there, not going to ask for authority to sign it tonight, but we're going to discuss the item in general, but we're not looking for signature, so it'll change, it'll stay on the agenda, but slightly different than what was originally planned. Do I have any other amendments to the proposed agenda?
No.
You don't? Sean, you don't? All right. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you, Sean. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, next item is approval of the April 12th Board of Selectmen minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
This is Kate. I'll make a motion to approve the April 12th, 2021 meeting minutes.
All right, motion has been made. Discussion on the motion?
This is Kate. I didn't see any changes to the minutes.
I'm good. This is Sean. I'm good.
Yeah, I didn't see anything either. All right, call for vote. All in favor of approving, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Okay, public comment. We've got quite a crowd tonight. If you're going to make a comment, that's fine. I welcome the comments. Would please keep it to no more than three minutes. And with that, I will open the floor to public comment. Okay. Saying none, we'll move on. And I see we've been joined by someone who's a phone call only. Please put your microphone on mute. All right. Selectmen's update. Got a few projects to go over and some other information. Rossi Property. We have a me, I have a meeting tomorrow with our environmental consultant, Ty and Bond, to review the Phase Two environmental analysis that was performed. So we are still moving forward with the investigation into that. We're also going to move forward to seek an extension on the purchase and sale agreement because the due diligence period is running out shortly. This will just extend it. And I'm sure Ross, the Rossi group will be agreeable to extend it because if they're not, then we're not agreeable to move forward. So I don't think that'll be an issue. Scoville Ho, nothing new on that. We're waiting to hear on our grant, Brownfield grant application. That should be sometime, probably mid next month. Some quick updates on projects on Bridge Road, the roundabouts at the intersection Bridge Road and 154, and then the one to the Route Nine connector. The plan, proposed plan is on the town website as well as posted in lobby of the town office building, a slightly larger version, if you'd like to take a look at it. There's project information on the town website as well. Where did, the state is doing two information sessions. There will be one this week for business owners to express their concern about impacts from the project. And again, that's going on at the same time the swing bridge is, so I know there's significant interest from the business owners. There will be a general information session for the public, June 8th, 7 o'clock. It will be online. We have not gotten the link information yet, but when we do, we will put that out on the town website. And I've mentioned it last month, but now with the town website, if you want to get project updates as they come in, you can sign up for an alert and get those if you'd like. Again, roundabouts are looking at starting spring of '23 and continuing construction in the construction period until fall of '24. Bridge Road sidewalks, again, no change on that. Still projected to start construction spring of 2022. Hattam Center sidewalks. We're working now on securing construction easements from the property owners. This is not anything where we're taking property like we had to do for the Bridge Road sidewalks. It's just, there are sidewalks there, but we're going to be on private property doing some of the storage of material, maintenance work, or not maintenance, but construction work, so we need easements for that. We have put that project out for bid. We got to authorize from the state to do that. And the bid closes on Monday, May 24th. Construction on the sidewalks hopefully will start later this year. Nothing new on the roads, other than to say the detailed list of the roads that we plan to get to was published in an article on HK Now. And it will be basically the same article in the upcoming edition of the bulletin, although I'm not sure when that's going to print, but I believe it's shortly. Other information, budgets. As I'm sure you know, the school budget passed last week. There were referendum in both towns. Very little voter turnout. It was right around 11% overall in Hattam, and Killingworth was not much different from that. The town budget, the Board of Finance proposed budget was approved last week, both operating and capital. The budget is posted on the town website. Public hearing is scheduled for May 12th. That'll be a virtual public hearing. That's this Wednesday. Town meeting will be on the 26th. That will be in person in some fashion. We can't do that online. That authority expires on the 20th. It may be an in-person vote. It may be a drive-by. It may be a combination. But basically, the information is put out in the public hearing. Not familiar with the process. Board of Finance, at their next meeting, considers the input, makes any changes they feel are appropriate to the proposed budget. And then at the town meeting, it's simply a vote yes or no on the proposed budget. Also, financial, as many of you know, the town is in line to get, all towns are in line to get a fair amount of money through the American Rescue Plan. Treasury today, this afternoon, actually put out their interim rule on what the details on what that money can be spent for. It was all of 151 pages instead of the little bit expanded from the four short paragraphs that were in the act. I haven't had a chance to even get past about page three, let alone digest what they're talking about, so. More on that, but at least guidance, interim guidance is out, and I will say it's even a day ahead of on time. COVID update. April, we have 58 cases, which is down from the two previous months, which is good. May to date, we have six cases, which if we continue on this track, will be again down from last month, which is again good. As of right now, total since the pandemic began, we've had 415 cases in town. Continuing to see, on average, the age of people being reported is shifting is down to the younger ages. The real good news is throughout the state, Middlesex County as well, test positivity rate, hospitalization, and new cases are trending downward. In fact, new cases over the last month statewide, daily new case rate average has gone down about 50% roughly. And that'll start to reflect in the hospitalizations and deaths, all of the which are going down, which is great. So I'm sure you know vaccines are available now for anyone age 16 and over. And authorization on the Pfizer for, it was 12 to 15-year-olds, emergency use is expected sometime this week. Our union negotiations, the town has two unions. We have commenced those. Their contracts expire at the end of June. We're in the early stage with both unions. It's Teamsters for Public Works and the Clerical Union for Town Hall employees. We, for both unions, we'll expect, barring any at the moment unforeseen circumstances, to have unions, negotiations concluded before the contract expires. We don't have to worry about extensions and retroactive pay. Couple of private projects to talk about of note. We've talked before about a daycare center going in on Brooks Court. Unfortunately, I understand the, that project has been canceled. The sale agreement for the property expired, and I guess I've been told there was trouble renewing that. Bill Warner, I see you're on. If I say anything wrong on these, please step in and correct it. Brooks Court Apartments, there's a proposal, and I've mentioned this before, for putting apartments on Brooks Court. That's going before planning and zoning on the 20th of this month. That project is proceeding. 80 units total when it's completed, and an architectural review committee has reported out on that project favorably on their meeting on the 28th. Couple more projects. We're on Bridge Road, the old ecotourism site, 105 Bridge Road. There's a new owner of that property. I noticed they were in there the other day doing soils testing for septic. There have been, as I've said before, proposals for multi-unit family housing in there. I expect we'll see the same from the current owner. Haven't actually seen a proposal yet, but it looks like they're proceeding. Last one I want to talk about is the Hope Garden. That's the name for the wellness center. That's proposed for Seven Island Dock Road, the yellow building there, right on 154, the old Marin, Marin Engineering Building. The owners, that property has closed a while ago. The owners were in with their construction people last week for a meeting with Land Use Office, Fire Marshal, Building Inspector to go over the initial set of plans, and that project is proceeding, I'm glad to say. That's all I have. A little long-winded tonight. Kate, Sean, do you have anything else to talk about or add to on these, on my comments?
This is Kate. I can chime in. We are, we have started the less than 30-day countdown to our farmer's market. The market kicks off June 4th. It will be running every Friday at the former Hattam Elementary School from 3:30 to 6:30. We're very excited. We'll be abiding by whatever health district guidelines are in place. So just a gentle reminder that, just please make it easy for us to run this market. In other news, the regional, our Regional Valley Council of Governments, the River Cog, they have unveiled the regional plan of conservation and development. It is open for public comment, period. They had a meeting last week to unveil it. Public comment is actually, it's pretty neat. It's all online. I did post on the town Facebook page a link directly to the regional POCD and where you can comment. And I also have an email that I'll be sending out to all the town groups, committees, commissions, et cetera. And lastly, while it feels silly to be talking about this in May, it's going to come up before we know it. The holiday decorations that happen in the center of town every year, where we decorate the businesses and the gazebo and the general downtown area. Cindy Sola has coordinated this effort heroically on her own for many years, and she is ready to pass the torch. So we are looking for a volunteer to take on this effort. It could be more than one person. But again, there is a lot that goes into it. Cindy has a lot of knowledge to pass along, so the sooner we can find somebody to take that over, the much smoother it will run. That's it for me.
All right, thank you, Kate. Sean?
I think I'm all set for right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sean. All right, moving on. Board of Education update. Jen, I know you're somewhere in this crowd. Oh, there you are.
I like the big crowd. It's very nice. Hi, everybody. I'm Jen Pavelora from the Board of Education. I'd like to give you a little bit of a report from our April meetings. First of all, the Board of Ed set the graduation date as well as the last day of school for Wednesday, June 16th. Using guidance from the state for indoor and outdoor celebrations, we will be having graduation, prom, and project graduation. We're very excited to be able to give that to our seniors this year. However, it's still a pandemic, and so we are asking the communities just to keep those numbers down so that none of our students, you know, all the mitigation strategies, everything you need to do to keep us safe so that our students can actually celebrate these milestones. They're very important milestones, and we're really glad that they get to experience them this year. Also, we changed next year's calendar a little bit. The 21-22 school calendar had a spring break that did not align with all of the neighboring districts. We usually set our calendar about two years in advance, and we found out afterwards that all the neighboring districts where teachers are from, where, where they had their students going, where their kids are going, did not align with ours. So we changed ours. So we are now on April 15th, starting with Good Friday and continuing the following week. And that also changed our last day of school to June 14th. All of that's on our website. We had a report from our Curriculum Subcommittee. They gave a in-depth update on the most recent metrics on student learning in relation to the pandemic. Cumulatively, learning loss for grades K through eight has been measured at approximately a 10% lower than in previous years. There are highs and lows. It's hard to just say, oh, it's a 10%. You have classes that are, that are doing better, some that are doing worse, depending on which subjects you're talking about, math versus ELA. It's, it's a very wide range, but if we were to combine it down, we do see learning loss this year. Additionally, those students who are already in need of intervention now need more support and intensive intervention for longer periods of time. At our high school, we see more students that have been struggling with math, English, and social studies courses than in typical years. The district will, this is nothing new. You've been hearing about this in the news, but we are, have been, I think I reported back to you in the fall, we've been watching it. We evaluate, we try something, we reevaluate, and so this is just the updated version for you guys. The district is going to continue to bridge the gaps. We have intervention. We have coaching. We're forming plans right now for summer learning programs for our younger students, and there will be summer credit recovery for our high school students this summer, and information on that will be coming out soon. You can read all of the presentation online on our Board of Ed website under the policy, I'm sorry, under the Curriculum Committee. Their April 19th meeting is where you can find that information. Additionally, our District Diversity Leadership Team has reported on their plans to hire a consultant to facilitate conversations throughout our district on diversity and equity. This collaboration would support discussion and learning sessions with the superintendent and the Board of Ed. It would serve as a thought partner for our leadership team, and it would provide professional development sessions for administrators and our staff so that we can enhance ongoing efforts to address equity and increase cultural competence throughout our teaching and our learning. Over at KES, last summer, I reported to you how we had a playground that was removed because of safety concerns. We will be replacing that playground. It's a K1. Now, this is a separate playground than what we talked about in this budget that was just recently passed. That one was a pre-K playground because the preschool was moved over to KES. This is the K1 playground that was removed last year. We will be spending no more than $25,000 on it. That's the, the way we worded that. And it's going to be installed before the next school year begins. Also, I wanted to let you know that, I think if anybody was following along with the budget, the Finance Committee recommended, and the Board agreed, to take $169,205 from the 21-22 budget and make those one-time purchases with our year-end balance this year. Those were things like our textbooks, our wrestling mats, the library tables and chairs, the scoreboard, those one-time purchases that you would not be seeing year over year, and we made those purchases this year with this budget. As you may have heard, I know Bob Uwer sent a message. Our superintendent has tendered her resignation. She is going to go off to Marlboro to be a part-time superintendent. I did not know that they have those. We are very grateful for all that she has done for the year and a half that she was here. She has moved us very far along, and we will be starting the search for a new interim superintendent and a new superintendent soon. And also, I just want to thank everybody who did go out to the polls to vote for our budget or just to vote, and to thank everybody who worked at the polls too. And that is it. Thank you very much. If, if the Board has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Jen. Sean, Kate, anything for Jen?
This is Sean. No, thank you. That was a good presentation. Thank you.
This is Kate. I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jen. Good report, and it's a shame to hear about Holly leaving, but I do wish her the best. All right, next item up, tax refunds. We have a total of five requested this month, one for real estate for a total of $67.43, and the other four are motor vehicles. They total $747.16. You should have that list in your package of material you got for the meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the tax refunds?
This is Sean. I'll make a motion. We approved the tax refunds in a total of $747.16.
All right, thanks, Sean. Motion has been made. Any discussion on the motion?
This is Kate. I have a grand total of $814.59.
I'm sorry. I'll amend my motion. I looked at, I'm sorry, I didn't scroll down far enough. You're right. It is the grand total of, I'll amend the motion to $814.59. I didn't scroll down far enough, sorry.
Electronics are great at times.
Yeah.
All right, we have an amended motion to approve $814.59. Thank you, Kate, for tax refunds. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, next up, we have three sets of appointments to make. Starting with an alternate, you should have the emails concerning an alternate appointment, alternate representative on the Salmon River Watershed Partnership Board. Again, this, this is, a conservation group has worked very well with the town and with the various conservation groups in Hattam Neck. They are working to obviously preserve the Salmon River watershed and working with the federal government on the, I think it's the Conti Reserve is where that watershed falls. Currently, Jim McCutcheonson from Hattam Neck is a member, is the alternate. He is stepping down from that position. And another person from Hattam Neck, Phil Goddrow has volunteered to fill the role, and Pat Young was the watershed coordinator. Patricia Young has endorsed and asked that we appoint Phil to fill that alternate role. Gail Reynolds, I believe, is our primary.
This is Kate. I'll make a motion that we appoint Bill Goddrow as the alternate for the Salmon River Watershed Part, Salmon River Watershed Partnership.
All right, thank you, Kate. Motion's been made. Any discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, the next is just a routine reappointment. It's Inland Wetlands Commission. All the commissions have a set period of time for appointment, and as it turns out, three of the commissioners' terms actually expired on the 1st of May. It's Paul Best, Jeremy DeCarli, and Joe Stevens. All three members are seeking to be reappointed, and that is endorsed by Mark Stevens, the current chairman of the Inland Wetlands Commission. But like a motion to approve reappointing the three commissioners to the Inland Wetlands Commission?
This is Sean. I'll make a motion that we appoint Paul Best, Jeremy DeCarli, and Joe Stevens. Reappoint them to the Inland Wetlands Commission.
All right, motion has been made. Any discussion on it? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, again, motion carries unanimously. All right, the last one is the Conservation Commission. One of the representatives, Tom Worthley, term also expired on the 1st of this month. He would like to be reappointed for another three years. That's endorsed by Gail Reynolds, who is the chairman of that commission. So I'm seeking a motion to reappoint Tom Worthley to the Conservation Commission.
This is Kate. I'll make a motion to reappoint Tom Worthley to the Conservation Commission.
Thank you, Kate. Motion has been made. Any discussion? Saying none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Motion carries unanimously. All right, new business. We have a few items to get through. First one is a done corporate resolution form, form rather, excuse me, for our accounts through, it's Webster Bank, but it's multi-bank securities. It notes that Ann Harder is an authorized signer, it's Finance Director. I'm an authorized person, as I have been as first selectman. This is just continuing those. So I'd like to get a motion authorizing me to sign their non-corporate resolution form so we can continue to conduct business with the bank.
This is Sean. I'll make a motion that we authorize Bob to sign the.
All right, motion has been made. Thank you, Sean. Kate, there any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Motion carries unanimously. All right, next contract, again, we're not going to actually look to sign the contract, because we wanted, Bill and I want to take a look at the wording a little closer. But just in general, as many of you know, we were for pre-pandemic in negotiation with Attlebrook, a special needs school. For them, they were interested in leasing the entire building at HES. We were actually down to the point of discussing terms and conditions when the pandemic scaled back all our plans, Attlebrook not being accepted, not being accepted from that. They approached this sometime after that about possibly purchasing it, but then the company decided to change direction, and they're concentrating right now on smaller facilities and not interested in Hattam Elementary School at all, unfortunately. We had a Realtor helping with that effort, a commercial Realtor out of Middleton, Plastonberry. We'd like to be able to approach him with a, again, having him listed for lease or sale. I want to stress that either of those would require a town meeting. Tom understands that. The contract will be written accordingly, that even if prospective buyer or prospective leaser is found, it's still got to go to the town meeting and may or may not be approved. I would like to be able to move forward with discussions to fine-tune this and get the Board's reaction to doing that, so I will open it for discussion or comments.
Well, excuse me, this is Sean. Yeah, I have no problem leasing. I think you know that I'm against selling the building, but I have no problem looking for someone to lease it, but I'd just be very careful in how it is written going forward, quite honestly, and have the whole Board review the agreement before it's actually signed.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, and either way, the option has to be presented to the town, depending on the terms. I don't know if I'd be in favor of a sale right now or not, or leasing or not, but I think the town, if we find someone to fill either role, should have the option of saying yes or no. All right, Kate, do you have any?
No, this is Kate. I'm also open to, to bringing this back to life. And was Attlebrook, was Attlebrook the only buyer that expressed interest or leasing? Was that the only entity that expressed interest the last time this was put out?
Attlebrook is the only one who came to us and expressed an interest, and we hadn't actually put it out, but as it turned out, one of their executives lives in town, so knew about the school and knew at the time they were looking. we hadn't actually put it out, but as it turned out, one of their executives lives in town, so knew about the school and knew at the time they were looking. That's what started that relationship. Uh, I will say, and I know it wasn't just a negotiating item. Attlebrook did make the, the point that there are a lot of vacant schools right now. Uh, and I'm sure you know that just from the news, particularly some of the religious Roman Catholic schools have been closing and consolidating, so unfortunately, there are a lot of schools available. What made HES attractive to Attlebrook was it gave them a chance to extend their market reach farther south into some of the other school districts. So we, we may get some interest, we may not, but we're not going to know unless we try.
This is Sean. This is one other thing on the agreement, Bob. Just want to make sure, because if we were, you know, talking about using some of that land for the community septic or whatnot, just that really needs to be delineated what actually they are buying or leasing, you know, a lot of, a lot of that property we're going to need.
Yes. Yeah, that, that'll be clearly laid out, the, the amount we need for the community septic and, and the other conditions, as well as we're probably, depending on how we draw the boundary lines, going to need an easement to be able to get there to do work on the septic, should that be needed. That, that'll all be
You know, and that's access to Swan Hill and, you know, easements for that and whatnot, because it is the primary access to Swan Hill.
Yeah, well, the primary, again, Bill, I know you're here to correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is the way the grounds were laid out for Swan Hill, you don't have to access it through what's remaining in the HES grounds. But there, we have been talking about creating an access basically near where the community septic is going. And that was as much to meet the state septic regulations for separation properties. I won't go into the details, but the town itself couldn't own HES and own the land that the community septic is going to go on if, if it's, even if they're made separate parcels, if it's a common boundary. So there was talk at the time about putting, giving the land truck, the land trust another access point to, to Swan Hill through that, but yes, but definitely anything we do with HES is not going to impede the access to the Swan Hill area the land trust has.
This is Bob Winch. Can you hear me?
Yes, Bob, we can. It says really not public comment, so please keep it brief.
Oh, I just wanted to endorse my concern that, that Swan Hill, uh, access is preserved.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. And yeah, it, it would be foolish of the town, and even though I don't always succeed, I try not to do foolish things to have, have given the land trust to the Swan Hill, because it is such a beautiful hiking area, and then do something that would prevent anyone from getting up there to hike in the area. So yes, that, that is a concern. All right, Sean, Kate, anything further on?
I'm all set.
All right. The next two items are, again, routine resolutions. Uh, they're, except for the dates of the exact paperwork. This is, it deals with funding the state gets from the Federal Department of Homeland Security that then gets rolled down to regional enterprises, in our case, the regional council of governments to administer for emergency preparedage use. Uh, we have to sign a an agreement, and we need a resolution from the Board of Selectmen in order for that to happen. Uh, giving me the authority to enter into the agreement that makes the Lower River Council of Governments, the regional administrator through the emergency planning team, the R E P T, of funds that we get through these two grants, again, from Federal Department of Homeland Security. There's one for the twenty nineteen grant, and the other one is, again, the exact same thing for the twenty twenty grant. It also discusses if we get any equipment through these grants, which the town currently doesn't have. Again, most of it is done on a regional basis, but various towns are given responsibility for maintenance and storage of the equipment. And we're agreeing to meet the manufacturer's requirements for maintenance, storage, et cetera, et cetera. As I said, right now, we don't have any of that type of equipment. But some of the other towns, the, some of the message boards you see are purchased through these funds and their regional assets, electronic boards. Some of the hazmat, equipment hazmat teams are, are funded this way. It's emergency preparedness money. So that said, I'd like to get a resolution authorizing first signing of the twenty nineteen authorization, and then we'll get a second motion if the first one's approved for signing the twenty twenty agreement.
This is Sean. I'll make a, a motion that we, uh, sign the twenty nineteen, uh, resolution for the, um, State of Connecticut Department of Energy Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management, um, grants.
All right. Motion has been made. Any discussion? My only comment is, once your department name cakes almost two-fold line, typewritten lines, it's time to shorten it. But with that, I will call for a motion, for a vote on the motion authorizing the signing of the twenty nineteen agreement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries unanimously. Now I will call for a motion to approve signing of the twenty twenty Homeland Security Grant Funding Agreement.
Uh, this is Kate. I'll make a motion, um, to authorize Bob to sign the resolution, the twenty twenty resolution for the Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security.
Thank you, Kate. Uh, any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the resite, resolution authorizing signing the agreements, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All right. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. Next and last item on our agenda tonight, prior to adjournment, is the Spencer Leverett House memorandum of understanding between the Friends of the Cove and the town. Tim, Taryn, I'm going to turn this over to you to, or if you, unless you have somebody else here you want to use as a spokesman for the group. Why don't you take us through what's being proposed?
Thank you, Bob. Um, hopefully, uh, Bob, Sean, Kate, you have a copy of the memo of understanding we, we provided to the bill in January. We're stepping back for a moment. Um, it's really not about the Leverett Spencer House per se. It's about trying to act on the vision that we as a community, we said we want to do for a long time, which is to develop Higgins as a place that is an amazing place for people to come and live or visit and appreciate the beauty that we have in our town. It happens that the Leverett Spencer House was, thanks to, uh, a number of people, including Liz Bizzazi on the, on, on the call tonight, writing a letter or writing a, an article, if you will, uh, for the Bulletin last year, saying it's going to be demolished, that I and others, Liz included, said, wait a minute, we have an opportunity to put two things together, which is to do something we can't do any other way. Every other way we look at trying to create the vision we want to create, to act on it, has dependencies. Rossi does, Scoville does. We own the Cove. We have an opportunity to take the Leverett Spencer House. The owner would be more than willing to give it to us and actually give us twenty-five thousand dollars to help us move it to the Cove and create a heritage and nature center. Heritage because ethics may have the maritime, chef may have the art, but nobody makes things like we made in Higgins. So our heritage in manufacturing, the nature we have, I, I think you've seen, if you haven't, please go to it. The, um, Friends of the Higgins Cove website that was created recently by, in particular, Gina and Peter, but others who've contributed. In one, in ten days, we have over four hundred and twenty people who say, that's cool. Yes, what we're saying here is, this is not a cheap endeavor by any shape, fashion, or form. It's cheaper than trying to do it from scratch. It's more meaningful than doing it fresh. And from what you guys have seen in the M O U and everybody else wants it, not including all the typos I put in that thing, so I apologize. There's a lot of community support for it. With four hundred and twenty people on Facebook, with, with the people on the call tonight, I think that this could be a huge economic engine. If we market it carefully, if we build it carefully over time, respectful of the boundaries of the people who live around there, so it does not become something that then I saw to either the Nobles or to the Zcarlies. But we have control. We have a choice we can make, which is, let's do something, or let's hope on dependencies in the future. And so the reason why we all got together is we got excited about saying, this is something we can do. So that is the preamble, if you will, to your discussion. So I understand that's where we're coming from. If a lot of people wanted to care a lot and do a lot, and probably more if we continue to create publicity. So thanks, Bob.
We try to
Bob, you're muted. Oh, there you go.
Thank you, Tim. All right. I asked Tim to come and, and present this. Uh, we talked a while ago. I told him we really need to publicize this. If you look through the memorandum of understanding, the current estimate, the seek is, and Tim's chime back in if I misstate it. It's expected it will cost the town in it, in addition to what's always been, already been raised and donated a hundred and seventy thousand. Uh, so this is not an insignificant project or an insignificant amount of money. So I asked Tim, we, this has got to be publicized. Uh, we've got to bring it up through the, the proper procedures and get a general town. It's, it's going to require a town meeting to approve it, obligating that much money through its capital plan expenditure. There's enough in the capital reserve that it doesn't have to be approved at this time for to be in this year's capital budget. It can be added to it later again with a town meeting. So I wanted to start the publication process. Uh, I've got some on the project, although I generally support it. I think it's a, a good idea, but I do think we need to get some of the details beyond the work. I, I was honestly surprised and pleased at the detail in the, the memorandum of understanding, but we need to take it a little farther, and a key thing being publicizing this and getting support. I will say, since I told Tim that, I've received twenty-one emails concerning the project. And of those twenty-one, many of whom are written by some of you who are on the call tonight, uh, twenty were in favor of it. One had reservations. It wasn't flat against it, but was concerned about the amount and just again, that we have to properly plan out and get, get, it's a major project treated as such. So it, it's a good outpouring of support, but again, twenty people in a town of six thousand registered voters is not a high percentage. So for me, this is a chance to open this up for questions from Kate or Sean and start the process and try to get more publicity for it.
Uh, hey, Bob, this is Sean. Uh, you, you know I'm on board with, with this, and, uh, based my question is, has the, our town attorney had a chance to take a look at the M O U and thought of any tweaks at all, um, uh, to it?
Yeah, I haven't sent it out to the town attorney yet for review. I can do that. Frankly, I'm a little more concerned about building code requirements, safety requirements. I, I think an independent review maybe by an architect who specializes in this, and I know I've got people on the call who do that. And Tim, the owner does that. I'd like to get an independent to take a look at it, just to confirm some of our, our the assumptions there, particularly about access and life safety issues. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to suspend the time and money and effort to move it there, only to find out that we've got to make some major alterations, because the state won't waive the building codes.
Bob, you're right. I'm sorry to interrupt again, and I apologize. I know
Right ahead, Tim.
But if you look at the, again, and I don't think that M O U was perfect by any shape, fashion, or form, but it was a way of getting us support and everybody's benefit. Bob has been a huge supporter, saying, let's see if the public wants to do this. But in the kind of layout of activities, I think one of the first things is you gotta, we gotta get Jacobson or somebody that feels comfortable taking a look and saying, how do we do this thing in a way that makes sense? Not, notwithstanding, where do we put it in a place that makes everybody in the neighborhood feel comfortable? Because if we couldn't do it in a way that's safe, and if we couldn't do it in a way that was pleasant, then we shouldn't do it. So that, you're absolutely right.
Thank you, Tim.
This is Kate. So I guess my question for right now is, what's, what's the call to action right now? Like, what are we trying to figure out right now at this meeting?
Okay. What I would say right now is, Liz, you want to, I'll open it for some comments or reply. Liz?
Um, I don't know that I'm speaking for all the Friends of the Cove, but personally, um, we need to, we, the Friends of the Cove need to raise a lot of money in it. So I guess, um, what, what I would like to see is that the, um, the Board of Selectmen are generally on board with the idea, and that it looks feasible, because we need to, we haven't really even attacked, I mean, we started doing public outreach, but it's a huge effort. And so, you know, I work a lot of hours, and so for me to, to dedicate what will be required of us, just to bring it to the awareness of the community, and, and, and get people on board, but also we'll, we'll need to raise funds for ourselves in addition to what the town gives us. So, so I think, and, and Tim or, or Peter, someone should, should contradict me or whatever, but I, I personally feel, we want to feel that the town is behind this. Generally, we understand there's a lot of what-ifs and all that stuff, so.
Yeah, I think, Liz, I think that's right. We're, we're, um, you know, my focus personally, and I'm not speaking for the Friends of the Cove. I mean, I'm not speaking for the Leverett Spencer House particularly. Um, my, my interest is developing Higgins Cove as a center for ecotourism and stuff like that, you know, and Gina and I started this Friends of Higgins Cove Facebook page, and some others have helped with it too, especially Hamish McPhail, who's on the call. Um, like a week ago, it got four hundred and fifty people or something liking it. You know, there, there seems like there's a lot of interest and, and, um, uh, this Discover Connecticut, uh, which is a TV show, it just did a little feature on, on, uh, Higgins Cove on their Instagram page. Like, I'd like a thousand likes or something in a day. So there just seems to be some interest. You know, you go there every weekend. The parking lot's full lately. There's tons of people hiking and enjoying it. So, and so this is a, you know, this is a nice opportunity to possibly anchor the Cove as a, as a tourist spot. Um, so I, and I, we understand there's a lot of stuff that happens between, you know, to actually getting the Leverett Spencer home approved for this, but it'd be nice to hear at least the town generally say, yeah, we think this is a good idea, you know, go with your fundraising efforts. Let's see what happens. You know, understanding it, it might not pass town meeting or might not pass referendum. We're trying to deal with it.
All right. Thank you, Peter. For the record, that was Peter Baird speaking.
Yeah, sorry for forgetting my name.
So this is Kate. Um, so for tonight's purposes, um, I will say that with many reservations and concerns, um, I, I would support this project. Um, I do think the Cove is, is a nice little gem. I actually stopped down there um, two weekends ago, um, just to kind of refresh my memory and, and check it out again. Um, I, I do think it's a very unique and neat idea. Um, but again, I don't want to get down into the weeds and the details tonight, because that doesn't seem to be our purpose. Um, but I do think there will be a lot of questions and concerns, um, as about how it can get done, uh, the cost of getting it done, and, and the what-ifs. Um, but as far as tonight's purposes, um, I think it's a, it's a very cool idea. Um, very much appreciate the grassroots effort that goes behind this. Um, so with that, I would say, um, it's, um, you have my support in pursuing, um, pursuing the what could be, I guess.
And, and this is Sean. Obviously, you have my support, and, and there, there are a lot of things that need to get hammered out, um, whether or not it's going to be legitimately possible and, and, and feasible to do. But as for the price, it is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars is a lot of money. It is. But it's in the, it's in the budget, not earmarked for this project, but it is doable for the town. We return usually more than that each year, um, back to the general fund at the end of the fiscal year, money that hasn't been spent by departments. So the money is there. But, but Kate is right there. Just, we need to hammer out, get down into the weeds, uh, and see exactly how this can be done. Um, but I, I would definitely support, support this myself.
Could I ask one question? I apologize, which is, um, I'm thrilled. Uh, I think collectively, we're all thrilled that you guys I think collectively, we're all thrilled that you guys feel that way. And yes, there are weeds and there are things that probably haven't been uncovered that we have, we won't uncover, but we uncover. But how do you think, as the three of you are thinking about moving forward, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but how should we move forward with you? To create more of a collaboration, to ferret out, can we make this happen? Because we do have a bit of a timeline saying, you know, at the end of September. The Cove will be here, or sorry, the beginning of September, the Cove will be here, but the Leverett Spencer House may not be, and the owner may not be as. Generous as to offer the kind of money he has offered to help support the effort to move it. So all I would ask, and again, you may not have an answer tonight, so let me please not put you on the spot. But I would ask that the three of you come back to us and say, what can we do to help closely work with you to begin to figure out, can we or can't we?
Tim, this is Sean. I think the the major thing is is really get your budget down and really start getting nailed into how much. You think this whole project is going to cost and how much you realistically think you're going to raise, because we do have to go to a public hearing and a public meeting about. Money and spending money. So if we have an idea soon of what is going to take, you know, how much you're going to volunteer for. For the excavation work, I know there's a lot of that, but what is it going to take and will you be able to actually do it? To make it make it happen. We need to be able to tell our the town and our constituents that, yes. This this organization is going to be able to to produce and then come and come forward with what they're saying they can do. That is important for us to know is, you know, that's the part of that that's this M O U and really tightening up this. And really showing that you guys can do it and we can go out and tell people, the few people that actually listen to us, that. That, you know, we're behind this and work, and this is why it can work for us. No, this isn't going to work.
Gotcha.
All right, Liz.
So. I think that this is probably an okay time to say this. So one of, because Sean or Peter just said that we have to move like really, really quickly and to make this happen by the September 1st deadline. A bunch of us have come up with an idea called. An Arts and Industry Festival at the Cove. And it's a way of just bringing the public down there and seeing it, and we we have a million ideas in terms of music and things like that. But we haven't even had our kickoff meeting, just like a few of us have met at the site and got a basic idea. We've. Tried to gather like 10 people to to help us troubleshoot all the issues. And so. And 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 because of the time constraints, we're hoping to do it, I guess, the second, it'd be one day, the second Saturday. In June and. With a rain date for the Sunday. So that's like a general idea. We talked a little bit about parking. We've talked a little about all the logistics. But the the questions that have come up are, A, would the town let us do it? And and then B. Insurance, and I know from my work with the the starting the farmer's market and the Higgin Vision Group things, like we couldn't get insurance until we had a fiscal sponsor. But and 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 Tim, if someone should correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the idea with Friends of Cove is it would kind of go through the town. And so then within how I'm just not, so maybe this is a whole separate discussion, but these are the things we're working with and and we're trying to move it like break neck pace with resolving them. So. I guess I just need a feedback on that. And then one other little comment in that I know there's projects going on in terms of. Stormwater management on the on the Cove site and. It seems like it should be coordinated with the potential location of the building. And so that's my concern, and I I see that they're already, they've already kind of redone what they did last the week before, and. So I was hoping it could have been coordinated with the house location. So anyway, those kinds of things, like anything that happens at the Cove probably should be worked together with the Friends of the Cove so we mesh and have a harmonious approach.
And this is Peter again. We Peter Baird again. We just had, we actually had preliminary discussions about forming the Friends of the Cove as a. As a nonprofit, you know, 501(c)(3) or or maybe make seeing if Hattam Town and Parks or something like this. We're trying to explore how to make it a more formal organization too. But again, it's happening quickly. I think we, you know, the Leverett Spencer House forced a lot of help out. Action decision making that was that had been brewing, but it's it's sped it all up a lot. So. Just so you know, that's on the on the horizon. And actually, I think the drainstorm to last Liz's last comment, the drainstorm still is there. But Bob, if you could speak on the plan to move that, that'd be great to, because I know a lot of people are concerned about it.
Well, specifically on the drainage, it's being rerouted to go into the system that the state put there for the the bridge that was redone. I mean, there are there are pluses and minuses of of either of those approaches, but. Putting it through to where the state is brings it out of major impact on the Cove area. So. But I would think. Tip for next steps, you know, Tim, if you work, see me, we can work out some of the details, but. We can have Jacobson take a look at this and get their evaluation. Like I said, we can probably. I know we can find an architect who specializes in in historic preservation, who's. Unbiased, no offense to those on the on the call here, or others who are involved with Friendship of the Cove, or Friends of the Cove, rather. And to Peter's point, it's probably good. This is a time bound project because if there wasn't half these things we're talking about now, we'd be talking about a year or two years from now. So. We're moving forward. And Liz, I think, you know, items like what you're talking about, the the arts and music and industry or particulars on the Cove are. Good things to start to publicize the Cove and the thoughts of moving the house there to support those sort of things.
This is Kate.
I'll follow up with you. Kate, I'm sorry.
No problem, Tim. And that's actually, this is Kate. So actually. I just wanted to touch on the logistics of communication. Because Bob, if I'm understanding the rules of order correctly, I just want people to be aware when they're sending us communications. You know, the the board as a whole won't be able to discuss much of this over email. Is that correct? I just want to make sure that we're transparent and that this this hap- this discussion happens in a in a public. Meeting, you know, we, you know, the board as a whole, the all three members won't be able to communicate back and forth over this via email. So I think the best bet would be to funnel information through Bob and Joanne to make sure it gets disseminated to the entire board without breaking any rules.
This is. That's an excellent point. Sean?
Yeah, this is Sean. So Kate, you're spot on there, and I have no problem asking Bob to to schedule a special meeting if we if we need to. Discuss something really quick. So yeah, good point, Kate. Thank you.
Yeah, and I have no problem calling for a special meeting if we if we need it. I hate meetings for the sake of having meetings, but when it's needed and then there's an agenda for it, I don't have any problem with special meetings.
And this is Kate, but just to clarify, people can talk with us individually. So if somebody calls me or Sean or Bob separately to discuss something about this, that's totally okay. But just like in an email chain as a whole, we wouldn't be able to respond. I just want to make sure every we're all clear on that.
Yeah, but by the Freedom of Information Act rules. As a member of the public, you can send communication even to the three of us simultaneously, but the three of us can't. Comment, so it's going back to each other. It's. Three person board makes this much harder than it would be if the board was five, but that's that's a whole different story. We've got what we've got. So. Yeah, Liz, do you have something to add?
Yeah, I thought I should address. So we actually, the Friends of the Cove have put together a team of professionals that are. Would would kind of be able to do site analysis and things like that. And. And so just calling in Jacobson. You know, and asking them what to do with it is actually not the way it should go forward. The landscape architect and architect would kind of lead with the the proposed. Sites and some alternates sightings and then work with Jacobson to work that out. And and I've done some very rough sketches. And showing, you know, possible septic location and well location, should we ever go that route? And and observing the wetlands, seppics, blah, blah, blah. So so just calling in Jacobson isn't as appropriate as kind of setting up a meeting with the people who have already put thought into it.
Yeah, Liz, and it wasn't my intention just to call Jacobson in and give him a blank slate and say, here, figure this out. It's.
Somebody else brought it up.
Yeah, I just want to have some.
I think Tim brought it up and it wasn't quite.
Say, yeah, this looks like it's feasible. The numbers look like they're reasonable or. It's never going to happen for life safety reasons, or it's never going to happen for less than $2 million when it's all up or. Whatever, just.
Right.
It's all got to be coordinated and we'll work that through Tim.
Right, right. Okay. I just wanted to make sure it's clear. And likewise, like life safety and all that, that 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 doesn't fall on a civil engineer.
Clearly, we need a meeting with the right people in the right room, probably not tonight, but we've got to sit down and figure out who should come sit and talk and just talk.
Yeah. Thank you, Tim. I think that pretty much sums up. And in general, the board generally supports this. As we see it now, and Sean, Kate, speak up upon misspeaking for for your sentiments. We should go forward. We should look into it. We recognize there's a time constraint. But we've got to put together a reasonable plan that the town can say yea or nay to, because unfortunately, we're not talking about a small amount of money to make this happen. Kate, Sean, any final comments on it?
No, it's a pretty good discussion so far. Thank you. This is Sean, by the way.
Thank you, Sean. All right. I think with that, we've reached the time to call for a motion to adjourn.
This is Sean. I've lost track, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Sean. I don't think either one of the three of us care who gets to make it as long as somebody does. Motion has been made. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, everyone. The meeting is officially ended.